I'd like to call the November 10th meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Mr. Fryling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Our first order of business today is council minutes from the meetings of October 10th and October 13th. Do we have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the council minutes of October 10th, October 13th, 2011.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next order of business is matters of special privilege. I believe we have none today. Is that correct? And that moves us to the next order of business, which are public hearings, and today we have two. The first public hearing is PCR 11-018, 11-019 zoning ordinance, housekeeping amendments, proposed ordinance 11-22 and 11-23. Mr. Nester.
These are two short amendments that incorporate changes to the state code that govern the city's zoning ordinance. These are mandatory changes that we have to make. PCR 11-018 changes the voting procedures in the Board of Zoning Appeals, and it requires a majority of the entire board to approve matters such as variances. So we have a five-member board. To approve a variance, it takes a vote of three members of the board, regardless of how many are present at the meeting. So if you have three at the meeting, which is a quorum, you need a unanimous vote to approve the variance. It used to be like that, then it was changed, now it's being changed back again. The Second Amendment, PCR 11-019, has been amended to reflect the state code change, which mandates that localities may only collect cash proffers for residential construction on a per dwelling unit or per home basis after completion of the final inspection. And both of these are detailed in the attached ordinances. Planning Commission held a public hearing on these last month, and recommended by a 6-0 vote that the changes be approved.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nester before we open the public hearing?
Yes.
Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to these issues, please come forward if you'd state your name and address. Not seeing anyone, I will close the public hearing and come back to council for any questions or discussion. Mr. Fryling.
Mr. Nester, could you give us a general idea of BZA member attendance at the meetings?
Well, we generally have a quorum. As far, I think generally everyone on the board is at the meetings for this part.
I just think it's important for this change, I'm sure the BZA is aware of it, but to communicate to them the added importance of them, or at least as many as are ever possible, being at every meeting, because it does potentially impact a number of issues, and I just think that they should be aware of that.
Yes, we'll pass that on.
Nothing. Hearing no further questions or discussions, I'll come to council for action.
Can we do these all at once, or both at the same time?
You can do this in one motion, just make sure you specify each proposed ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of ordinances, ordinance 11-22 and 11-23, and PCR 11-018 and PCR 11-019.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Reed. Our next public hearing is a public comment period on the appointment to the Williamsburg-James City County School Board. This is a time where anyone who wishes to speak to anyone who is a candidate, or it's also a time when anybody can put anyone's name into consideration if they so wish. With that, Ms. Shelton, is there anything you need to add at this point?
No, there's not.
This is a requirement of state code that we hold a public hearing for this appointment, and that the appointment not be made for seven days after that.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. I have several speakers' cards, so I'll go through those first, and then anyone who wishes to speak after that may do so as well. The first card I have is from Dr. Oscar Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your service on the school board.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Oscar Prater. I live at 504 Ashwood Drive, Williamsburg, Virginia. I'm here this afternoon to speak on behalf of Mrs. Elise Emanuel, reappointment as a member of the board, school board for the city of Williamsburg. May I hasten to add that I do so with distinct pleasure. Over the 50 years I've been involved in education, I've had the opportunity to meet many fine people. Mrs. Emanuel ranks in the top 10 percent. She has demonstrated the intellect, the knowledge base, the people skills, the ability to view and appreciate man and his behavior from all kinds of references, all of which are necessary for me to rank her as high as I did. Having known Mrs. Emanuel for some 40 years, I've found her to be well-informed, very effective in dealing with people, and possess the kind of unique characteristics that enabled her to lead groups to consensus that's to the benefit of the total group. She has been superior in her performance. I had the privilege of knowing her as a teacher, as a leader of the teacher organization, as an administrator, as a state board member, and as a school board member. Her performance at all levels was second to none. She exemplified wit, appreciation, and understanding, the necessary communication and social skills that accelerated her far above the rest and made her quite successful. She never wavered in her dedication to succeed in each position. Her loyalty to the operational principles of the positions, and her strong belief that her role in each position was something worthwhile, made her exceptional. Trustworthiness, loyalty, and dedication are the characteristics, I believe, that best describe this candidate and make her the number-one pursuit for this position. She always operate on the strictest standard, her own. She's truly goal-oriented, and the goals, when the goals are established, the measurements are decided, the achievement of the goal becomes her number-one priority. Her perseverance is second to none. If chosen to return to the membership of the board, Mrs. Emanuel will certainly be an asset, one that you can brag about as being a representative from the city, and one I can brag about as being my colleague. Ladies and gentlemen, I could not recommend anyone more highly than I do, Ms. Elise Emanuel.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Oscar. Our next speaker's card is from Dr. John Allenz. John, thank you for your previous service on this report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, council. My name is John Allenz. I live at 129 Chandler Court, and I am here to speak in support of Elise Emanuel's reappointment. There are many, many good reasons to reappoint Mrs. Emanuel. We've just heard some. I've distilled mine down to three, and I promise not to forget the third. We'll start off with the quality of her service over the course of these last eight years or so, and I will use an example of that, redistricting. I'm tempted to say redistricting wars, because in many respects, those processes were adversarial. Anybody who was close to them knows that that is the plain, unvarnished fact. And due in large part to Mrs. Emanuel's tireless, at that point, service, I don't know how many hours, our children came out pretty well. At least they came out a lot better than they might have come out otherwise. That is a fact. The second reason has to do with her position on issues, and it is almost always, I have disagreed with her once or twice, but almost always, the right position. And I will use an example, a recent example of that, the situation at James Blair, or I could say, the James Blair debacle. There are two members of the Williamsburg-James City County School Board who tried every way they knew how to keep Blair from being turned into a brief haven for the WJC administration. We suspected the enrollment projections that we were given. We recognized the dissimulation that characterized our efforts to get a clear idea of how much it would cost to put Blair back online as a middle school. I recall finally getting the figure of $75,000. See how that flies, if you ask, at this point. And as you well know, we lost that one, and the consequences are with us and will be with us in the future for quite a while. The third reason to support Mrs. Emanuel has to do with her institutional memory and experience in relation to her forward-looking vision. WJC, excuse me, has committed itself to a strategic plan, the vision statement of which speaks of developing a premier school system that is an expression of the unique quality of our community. Well, with due respect to our friends in the county, when we talk about the unique quality of our community, we are talking about Williamsburg. We're talking about the college, we are talking about colonial Williamsburg. We live here, we walk these streets, we know. That is what sets this community off from any other community that I can think of. And Elise Emanuel was very much an expression of this community. And as the school board is about the critical business of developing a strategic plan, and they used to say of strategic plans that they were, you know, passe just about as quickly as the ink was dry. We don't use ink now, not that kind of ink, but I also think that this strategic plan is likely to be a document that will have some significance beyond the first year or two that it has put into existence. And that is why it has to be a document that actually does express the values, the aspirations of this community, and I cannot think of anybody who is better able to facilitate that process than Mrs. Emanuel. So taking those three together, I urge you, on the basis of my own experience as her colleague, on the basis of my being a citizen of Williamsburg, very much committed to the community and its future welfare, please reappoint her. Let us have the benefit for the next four years. Thanks.
Thank you very much, John. The next speaker's card I have is Sarah Bland. Sarah, welcome, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Mayor Holman, members of city council, my name is Sarah Bland. I live at 404 Capital Landing Road. I'm here to support Elise Emanuel in her desire to serve another term on the WJC school board. My husband, Bob, and I have three daughters who have attended WJC schools their entire lives. The oldest is now in college, the other two are both students at Lafayette High. We have been actively involved with their daughter's education at all levels, and so have stayed informed about many issues over the years. We have always been impressed and pleased with Ms. Emanuel's leadership on the board. She represents all of the district's children well, and especially those of the city. She is always accessible and genuinely interested in listening to our comments and ideas. There have been several occasions when either Bob or I have contacted Ms. Emanuel about an issue. She has been extremely responsive as she tried to clarify information or seek answers for us. We feel very comfortable going to her with our concerns. Ms. Emanuel has the time, experience, expertise, and dedication to continue to serve effectively. She's also a very nice person. For these reasons, I urge city council to reappoint Ms. Emanuel to represent the city of Williamsburg on the WJC school board. Thank you.
Sarah, thank you very much for being here. Next card I have is Kira Cook. Kira, welcome, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and members of council. My name is Kira Cook, and I reside at 315 Penniman Road. I'm here this afternoon to encourage you to reappoint Elise Emanuel to the WJCC school board. Elise is knowledgeable about every aspect of our school division. Her expertise is, in my opinion, invaluable during a time of transition and of positive progress in the system. Elise is available to city parents and frequently attends community and school-based events. Her attendance at such events offers an important connection between city residents and the school division that garners a sense of trust among parents. Elise is engaged in issues of import to the community at large, and therefore able to factor that into her decision-making. She is logical and thoughtful, always considering every side of an issue, something we should value, given the growing diversity in the city's population. Elise is responsive, always returning phone calls and emails. Her follow-through is admirable and unusual in today's busy world. And Elise is respected by her colleagues on the school board, having served as its chair. As a stakeholder in a joint division, that respect, I believe, is a currency more valuable than the city's annual financial contribution to the school division. For all these reasons and more, please reappoint Elise Emanuel to serve another term on the school board. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Kira. The next speaker's card I have is Mr. John Whitley.
Mr. Mayor, I prefer if it's permissible to speak last.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the school board appointment? If so, please come forward if you'd state your name. Mr. Whitley, I think you may be last.
I'm Dr. John Whitley. I live at 110 Governor Berkeley Road in Williamsburg, Virginia. I have cast my lot for consideration for the school board, only because I wanted to make certain that not at the last moment, anyone came forward that would, in an aggressive way or otherwise, compete against Ms. Emanuel. I'm here standing before you, casting my vote of support for Ms. Emanuel as I withdraw from consideration. I second the comments of my friends and colleagues who have spoken on her behalf. Elise is a friend of 40 years, and I support her and her role with the school board, and will do everything I can to assure that our interests, our city interests, are tantamount. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. If anyone else wishes to speak, put any name in consideration. If not, I will close the public hearing, come back to council for any discussion, comments. If not, we will have a closed-session meeting on appointments. I think at the end of this meeting, we will make a decision at some point, and that will be announced at our next council meeting in December. Thank you all for being here today, and thank you for participating in this public hearing. This school board appointment is one of the most important appointments that city councils makes, and having the community involved is critical to that, so I thank again each of you for being here today, and thank you in particular, Dr. Whitley. Okay, our next order of business is reports, monthly financial statements. Jack, anything?
Yes, just briefly on both page one and two, page one on revenues, page two on expenditures. You'll see some changes next month when the accruals are made from expenditures and revenues currently in the report. Now, it will be backed out and put into last year's budget, so all that is being done with the audit. But having said that, on page two, you'll notice that landscape spending looks like it is well above where you expected to be at this time, and that's a result of that. Mostly was the hurricane expenditures that took place, and we'll receive back about $275,000 from FEMA, and most of that will go to reimburse this account. So again, expect some changes next month when the accruals are applied, and overall, we're finding ourselves pretty much lined up, both in spending and in revenues with where we were at this time last year, when all is said and done.
And any questions for Jack on the financial statements? Not monthly departmental operating reports?
Yes, just one thing we'd like to bring to your attention. I've asked Mark Farum, IT Director, if he would give you an update on the City 411 app, which is now available both for smartphones, iPhones, and Droids and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Jack. Mayor and city council, today we've announced the availability of our newest, or our only, our new smartphone app, City 411, keeping with other applications, the name City 411 simply are kind of along the same lines as our text-based application that we use. This program is now, as Jack said, on the Apple App Store. It's available on the Android market, and it's free of charge. So I'm just going to walk you through the application pretty quick. As you see, I'm actually working on an iPad right now. This is available for iPhones and for Android-based devices. It's available for an iPad, but only for an iPad 2 that has a 3G connection to it. So the predominant amount of iPads, it's not going to be available for, it's not designed to run on that. But for the purposes of demonstration, that's what I'm using today. So I go into the application, you get a notice about, don't text and drive, don't use this app and drive. And essentially, the navigation, as you can see, is across the top. You get some initial description about the application itself. The next tab across the top is about, and this is specific to city council, various different types of information. You can see we've actually had them include the pictures here at the bottom. All this information came directly from the city's website. And then the next two are contact information. So keep it in mind that this is on a smartphone. If you've got the app, you have all of the contact information in terms of, and here would be email addresses, and here would be, in addition to that, would be telephone numbers of frequently contacted departments. But in addition to all of that, you can now report issues using this application. Plug back in here. There we go. So kind of mirroring what we do on the city's website, so for example, if you had this on a smartphone, and you had a recycling mist pickup to report, you can simply click that. You can take photos. May not be the most recycling, I don't know if you'd want to use a photo, but if you were reporting a pothole or a street light out, you could use that. It's going to take that photo, then you can go through the app, include some text messages. If you wanted to include audio messages, you could record your voice, give like a voicemail as well, it would be tied to this. Probably the really cool feature of this, in particular, if we're talking about potholes and things that are very specific, it has a GPS functionality in it, which kind of limits to the smartphones, because they have that capability. If we were reporting something like a pothole, we could GPS coordinate that, so you have the exact location of the pothole if you were standing next to it. So the GPS picks that up, you can include, you can stay anonymous, you can include your name if you'd like, email address, and I won't go through the whole thing. You click next, and then at this point, you get kind of a review, walk you through the process. You can see everything that you've done here to this point. You can see your picture, you can see your text notes. Again, of vital importance to us for a lot of these is the exact GPS coordinates. So that at this point, we would hit the submit button, that would go to a system, that would then notify the Public Works Department and the IT Department that there's been a new request that utilizes this application, and at that point, the appropriate people would be contacted, and then that would get filtered into the existing systems that we use to track work orders and things of that nature. So that's it. In a nutshell, we just kind of wanted to bring this to your attention so that you know that it's out there, it's available, it's free of charge, and it's ready to go at this point. So with that, is there any questions?
Great, thank you very much, Mark. I guess this may be a question for you or for Jack and Jody. What other means of getting this information out to the public are we going to utilize so that people know this is available?
Sure. This morning, there was a press release that was sent out to numerous media outlets. It's also on the city's webpage. Just our normal, standard ways of communicating that out.
Okay. And I assume Kate Hobing's going to have quite a role in that, too.
She has quite a role.
Thank you.
We understand that the Daily Press was fairly interested in this, and so we expect they'll do a fairly significant piece on it.
Mark, is this something that other communities have? Where does this fit in the sort of the timing of communities going this direction?
Certainly, there's other communities out there. The company that helped us develop this through our partnership with the Alliance for Innovation, their primary focus is localities. However, in and around this area of Virginia, I know of none. I'm assuming that'll start to gain traction, and you'll see this more and more.
Thank you. Paul?
Mark, could you talk a little bit about how this information is processed once it's received by the city? Does it come to a central clearinghouse or inbox, or is it automatically disseminated based upon the categories chosen by the sender?
It has the ability, first of all, the information comes in, certain people within Public Works, and then within my department get a notification via email. We actually have the ability to have text-based notifications. We're not using that at this point. But it goes into a central repository based on those categories, and those categories could, in the future, expand to others that may cross departmental lines. Right now, it's more of a Public Works-focused application. Once that comes in, then they take it and they apply that into their work order system so that then it gets assigned to the right people, and then we can ensure the proper follow-up as we watch the issue filter its way through the entire, the system and the process itself.
And for a resident who uses this app and submits an item, what should be their expectation on response? Will they get a thank you, we've received your issue, and two, thank you, we've resolved the issue?
Yes, sir. Once it comes in, they'll get a notification that it has been received by the city as it works its way through the Public Works work order system. At that point, once the issue is resolved, they'll get another notification that their issue that they submitted has now been resolved.
And do you have any sort of, it may not be necessary, but I'm just curious, if you have any check system to make sure that everything that has been received does get into the public order system?
Yes. Once it comes in, we're going to actually have that email system, the City 411 system will actually submit automatically to it, to the Public Works work order system. So that connectivity is already established and in place.
Okay, thank you.
Scott?
It's all very exciting.
It's exciting. It is very exciting, and it seems to me that there's no place that the city employees can hide anymore. If there's a problem, it's going to get to you guys. The City 411, is that something that's been used? Have you seen much, many people texting in problems?
Certainly, it has. The usage ramped up dramatically during the hurricane. That was a primary means of communication for the city. Prior to the hurricane, we were somewhere less than 100. After the hurricane, we're somewhere north of 300, I believe, right now, subscribers. After the hurricane, we're, we're somewhere north of 300, I believe, right now subscribers to it.
Good. And clearly, with, you know, with the availability and, you know, with this technology, more people will probably take advantage of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Judy?
More to the point, I think people now have multiple ways to get ahold of the city. So they really, they can't say, you know, I'm too busy to call about the pothole or whatever, and I've got to get myself a smartphone. I see what happens comes.
Well, I, I think this, this whole, the efforts that you and Kate and others have made on creating sort of, and utilizing social networks as a communication mechanism really paid off during the hurricane big time. And I've, I've had so many people tell me, both from the city and the surrounding counties, how much they utilize that and how important it was to them. So thank, thank you all for all of that. And I think this is just one more step in, in the city pushing that boundary of, of ways to communicate. So thank you very much for going this direction. Next order of business is city manager reports. We have three. The first is the QuarterPath Community Development Authority Bond Financing, Proposed Ordinance 11-24. And I see a number of our friends on the back rows. Thank you for coming again to the, to the meeting. Hopefully, we, we look forward to seeing you again, but I think you guys are probably satisfied that you've seen enough of us for a while. But thank you for being here. Jack?
Yes, on Monday, we took some time and went over the, the workings of the bond issue. This provides for a $15 million bond issue in order to finance improvements in the southeast quadrant of the city, specifically construction of Battery Boulevard from the QuarterPath Crossing Shopping Center across to the new hospital and on to 60, just, just inside of Route 199, and the associated utilities that go with that. So at this point, it's, comes to City Council for a decision whether or not to adopt this ordinance. This ordinance would authorize issuance of the bonds, establish the special assessment district and assessments for this purpose, and authorize entering into a special assessment agreement with the developer and, between the city and the developer. So we're ready now for that action, and just happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. And this, this is, we've had multiple sort of presentations and discussions on this, but I'll come to council for any questions.
I don't have a question as much as a comment. And a lot of this has been said before, but I think it's worth emphasizing that the financing of the infrastructure at QuarterPath is something we obviously want to accomplish in order to facilitate the eventual development that will take place there, and in particular, the hospital. But beyond that, what's particularly appealing about the establishment of this special assessment is that it not only goes to fund the basic public infrastructure, the roads and sewer water, but also the walking trails and the pocket parks, which are going to be a valuable amenity for hopefully the entire community. And secondly, the establishment of Riverside as the primary or only assessment payer until the property is transferred, and then the single assessment satisfaction at that time the property is transferred avoids so many potential problems that we could see in an otherwise structured arrangement. I'm sure it was complicated to do it, but we appreciate all the effort that went into that.
Thank you. And that's a very good summary of how this works.
Scott?
No, I, I think it's a good sign that we're moving forward, getting that, that quadrant of the city going. When we talk about diversifying our economy, this is a big chunk of opportunity for us.
Judy? If not, then I'll come back to council for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council adopt ordinance 11-24, establishing the special assessment for the QuarterPath Community Development District, and authorizing execution of the special assessment agreement between the city, Riverside Healthcare Association, and the QuarterPath Community Development Authority for the purpose of constructing roads and other public improvements to serve the southeast quadrant of the city of Williamsburg.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
And again, thank you to Jack, to all the staff, and to you, everyone else who's been involved in this from Riverside and Bond Consultants and everyone. Thank you very much for your, for your work on this. Our next city manager report is fiscal year 2013 VDOT Revenue Sharing Funds, Proposed Resolution 11-17.
Yes, Mr. Clayton will give his report.
Yes, before you today is resolution number 11-17, in support of the FY '13 Revenue Sharing Applications Through VDOT for Street and Sidewalk Improvements. We've just recently finished our side sidewalks throughout the city using these same funds. The revenue sharing program is based on a 50/50 cost-sharing formula. We are applying for $767,550 in funds from VDOT, and the city's going to contribute an equal amount for a total of about $1.5 million. Since the program is popular among localities, the process is, is a competitive one, and in order to improve our chances, we are kicking in an additional $43,000 for engineering fees. We are optimistic about our chances of getting these things, and we'll find out, the CTB, the Commonwealth Transportation Board, will act in June timeframe, so we'll know something by, by July of next year if we got the money. The two projects we're applying for is the Prince George Street reconstruction. That'll be the block between Boundary Street and Armstead Avenue. This will, what our, what our plans are is pretty much match the, the other block, the adjoining block between Henry and Boundary, where we have brick sidewalks, new curb and gutter, asphalt, new street lights. We're also going to narrow the road in this block as well to give us a wider sidewalk on the business side, and hopefully this will help spur some more development in the Prince George Commons project. Sidewalks, we are looking at sidewalks again for revenue sharing. This time, we're going to try to do eight locations. The list, you have the list there in front of you. I'm not going to go over all these, but I want to highlight a couple of them. The first one up there is Richmond Road, between Walsh Farm Drive and Patriot Lane. That is the last section of sidewalk on Richmond Road that, that's not in yet. We're also going to put a curb and gutter section in there, and a little bit of pavement widening to give us a turn lane. So we'll have a continuous sidewalk all the way through the city on Richmond Road. The Lafayette Street, the next one there, Harrison Avenue to With Street, actually actually With Avenue. The, we don't have enough right-of-way there behind this, behind the curb to get a sidewalk in. As you know, there's a row of pine trees in there, so our game plan there is to, is to narrow up Lafayette Street and put a sidewalk in. If you, if you ride down through, there is a well-worn path over there, so it does get a lot of use, and so we're looking forward to that one. But we're going to narrow the street, I think, about eight feet to give us, get us a sidewalk in there, give us a utility strip and sidewalk, and we'll still have the row of trees behind that. So we're looking forward to that one. The, the other, the other one I want to talk about is Bypass Road between Route 132 and Parkway Drive. That's the longest project we have. It's 2,700 feet long. Again, well-worn path, a long bypass road. This is going to be a little bit more difficult project because behind the curbing, there is some roadway fills and some slopes there. We've got a lot of grading to do in there, but that'll be a welcome project. We see a lot of folks walking along that, that area. It's kind of dangerous. And finally, the, the last two are the Prince George Street and the Scotland Street. And what we're trying to do there is pretty much tie in the Prince George retail area to the, the Deli Corner area, kind of match those places up and improve the walkway between those two, those two sites. So we can't quite get the sidewalk to, to front to, to Braxton Court, but we're getting to the King and Queen Apartments. As you can see, that K and Q is a King and Queen. And we're waiting to see what the college does in the rest of that block there. They might have some plans in there for, for some more redevelopment in there. So we'll take care of the rest of that sidewalk when that happens.
All right. Okay. Thanks very much, Dan. And any questions or comments or?
Two questions. I think, two questions. Mr. Clayton, when you said we couldn't quite get to Braxton Court, that's not for lack of interest or desire in accomplishing it? There's more practical obstacles?
Yeah, too many things. We have the house there and some steps, and there's a lot of, it was just, can't do it. Not enough right-of-way either for that matter.
But if those issues could be overcome, then that is something the city certainly would want to achieve.
Very much so.
Could you talk a little bit more about Lafayette Street from Harrison to With? You talked about constraining Lafayette Street to some degree. Does that make, let me just start by saying Lafayette, to me, is one of those streets that begs you to go a little bit faster than the speed limit legally allows, particularly from the part, and maybe it's from With all the way down to Confusion Corner. But in that particular area, it's fairly wide. So will the, cutting into the street make it about the same width of what you see farther up Lafayette Street near Bacon, or will it be more narrow than that?
It won't be any narrower than that. It'd be pretty close to that same width.
Because up on that upper, I don't know if it's upper end, but that end of Lafayette Street, it's less tempting to speed because there's more traffic coming from the, just the more narrow passing.
It's narrow, but also you have parked cars in that, in that area too. So, and we only experienced parked cars in that section basically during football games for the most part, and there's people parking there. So we're, we're probably going to take off, I know during football, we, they park both sides, but they won't be able to do that anymore, they'll be able to park on one side once we narrow the road. But it'll, it'll feel much narrower, and that should probably help some. It's hard to go, you don't feel like you'd be going 25 miles an hour, it's so, it's so wide there, so hopefully this will take care of that.
Thank you.
Scott?
It's all very positive, especially the part pertaining to Prince George Street, and how you're going to kind of phase that in with what's going on, on the college side.
Well, you know, the college, just with their, the triple square in the back, back there, they put a pretty good section of sidewalk back there, so we'll be tying into that.
Excellent. Dan, I think it's always good to try to go after grant money if, if we can get it. Is there an impact? What would be the impact if we don't get the grant money?
Depends on the budget processes, you know, we'll have to see how much money we want to put into the, to the project for, we might have to cut this project in half, maybe.
Right.
Depends on what council wants to do, how much we want to put effort. And I think, I think the higher priority is probably Prince George Street. That area needs some help, needs some work in there. And then sidewalks, these are, these, we're getting into the sidewalks now that are difficult to do. I think otherwise, they would have been done by now.
Right.
But these are, some of these are getting difficult to build because there are a lot of grading and a lot of issues where we can't get through because of buildings and whatnot. So these are, these become more and more difficult ones. And after this, if we get all this done, we'll be in pretty good shape, and the rest of them are really, really hard.
The, in terms of the narrowing of Lafayette Street, which side would that be cut off of?
It'll be on the, the Casey Field side.
Okay.
Right. That's the, there's a path, a little bit of a path on the other side on railroads and track side, but for the most part, people walk on that side. The sidewalk further up towards Richmond Road is on that side. So we're going to continue it.
Okay. The, the other thing, when, I'm glad to see that we're, we're putting some, that focus behind, you know, with sidewalks going to end behind, behind King and Queen. Is there an option to put a crosswalk there so as people, pedestrians walk towards the corner that they're?
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussion about that, namely because it's, it's not at an intersection, we don't quite get to Braxton Court.
Right.
So we'd like to have gotten to Braxton, and we could have put a crosswalk there at Braxton. Make more sense to have it at an intersection as opposed to in the middle, mid-block thing.
Sure.
We're still wrestling with that, so.
I, I think it'd be important to keep wrestling with it, because you hate to have people walk there and then not know what to do, and, you know, at least with a crosswalk, there's some signage that, that tells drivers to, you know, that that is a pedestrian crossing and be on the lookout for it.
And we'll be able to also play about here to see if that really, that connectivity really helps us that much, if we get a lot of people walking back and forth between those two areas. It'd be nice if we do.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan.
Judy?
Just kind of a follow-up. If we got part of the money, are these in order of how you do them?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay. Prince George would be first, I take it?
Yeah, probably. We really haven't, we, we had a lot of discussions about these, and there's a couple on there that aren't at very high priority, I can tell you that. And some of them, we might even could do ourselves, like the, the Armbound Road between Middle Street and the Fire Station, you know, that's not a big deal if that gets pushed out. The sidewalk on Lafayette Street between Page Street and Waller Street, I don't think we see that particularly many people walking that particular stretch. That, that one we could, we could eliminate, but it would be nice to finish up the Richmond Road, that little section up there that's not done, it'd be nice to get that done.
Okay, well, you know, maybe we'll get all the money.
Lafayette, Lafayette's nice to get done. That's an expensive one, though, because you're doing a lot of roadwork and stuff, so.
And these will become part of our discussion on the capital budget, both Planning Commission and City Council discussion as we move forward. So once, once we know something about funding, we can.
Yeah. And we did take, Reed, Reed and Jack and I sat down, and we did take into account Planning Commission's input over the years, so that's, was all put into the thing.
Great. One, one more question.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry if you mentioned it. What would be, when would we find out?
July.
July.
This is, this is FY '13 now.
So we'll be well past our CIP discussion?
Yeah, right. Yeah, I think what we'll do is we could put this amount of money in the budget for our, you know, our contribution. If we didn't get the money, then I think we'd just spend our money, and that would probably get us, that'd get us Prince George for sure and some of the, a couple of these items. So we could get some stuff done.
But one more question, Doug's, Doug's question about crossing Scotland Street. Has there been any thought given to a crosswalk where Prince George comes in? Because if, if you were walking on that side and got there, it might be obvious that, well, maybe I want to cross here rather than sort of going further. So that might be worth looking at as well.
Exactly. We did that too. Yeah. And so.
Yeah, it's sort of a weird intersection, because it's a three, you know, sort of a, not quite a T-intersection, but, but that might be worth thinking about as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any, any further questions? Okay, thank you, Dan. The third city manager report is legislative issues for the 2012 General Assembly Proposed Resolution 11-16.
Yes, I believe you have your, at your places, the, the latest, perhaps the final version, and if it is the final version, we suggest you adopt it. If not, that you amend it and adopt it.
Can I ask one procedure question?
Yes, sir.
Before we do that, did we need to approve the last resolution?
Oh, did we not?
Sorry. Yes.
If so, Mr. Mayor, I'm with the City Council, approved Resolution 11-17, and authorized the city manager to proceed with applying for fiscal year 2013 VDOT Revenue Sharing Funds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you, Paul, for catching that one. I wanted to move on. Okay, so we're at proposed Resolution 11-16 legislative agenda.
Yes, again, just, there's just those relatively minor changes that were made since your discussion on Monday.
We had a discussion Monday, some recommended changes were made. Jody did that, got that out to anyone, everyone. Is there any further discussion at this point? Any further wording changes?
No, sir.
Anybody?
Thank you.
If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of Resolution 11-16, a resolution supporting certain local and state legislative priorities.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
And thank you for everyone for the input on that. I think we're, we're at a good point with this, and, and the next step in this, Jack, will be a, a meeting with our two representatives to the General Assembly, and you'll begin arranging that.
Right.
point with this, and, and the next step in this, Jack, will be a, a meeting with our two representatives to the General Assembly, and you'll begin arranging that.
Right, Ms. Miller will take the lead on that, and check in with their schedules now that we know who they are, and set that up for December, sometime in December.
Okay, thank you. Next agenda item is unfinished business, I don't believe we have any, is that correct? Next agenda item is new business appointments to boards and commissions, I believe, we have one, Mr. Friling?
We do, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move that effective today, November 10th, 2011, City Council appoint the Honorable Richard Y. Attlee Jr. to the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board for a three-year term to expire on June 30, 2014.
Motion and a second, Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
The final agenda item for today is open forum at time when anyone who wishes to address City Council on any, any matter may do so, if you wish to address council, please come forward, state your name and address, and we look forward to hearing from you. Seeing no one come, I will, I do believe we have items for a closed session?
We do. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per sub-paragraph one concerning appointments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?